Good evening, everybody. The time is now 7:02 PM and the executive session has been concluded. Will all participants in the executive session please state their names for the record?
Carol Harvey.
No.
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 Ken Matthews.
Paul Sonnier.
Noel Sawyer.
John Schaefer.
Aaron Smith.
Suzanne Leclerc.
If any person participating in the executive session believes that any substantial discussion of any matters not included in the motion to go into the executive session occurred during the executive session, or that any improper action occurred during the executive session in violation of the open meetings law, I ask that you state your concerns. Hearing none, the next agenda item is the Pledge of Allegiance. If you all please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thank you all for being here tonight. We are very, very fortunate tonight to welcome one of our veterans in our community, and I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Joe Delisio to start the presentation. Thank you, sir.
Mayor Levy, ladies and gentlemen of the City Council, good evening, and thank you for this opportunity to introduce to you Mr. Merrell Bradley. Mr. Bradley will be turning 90 years of age on the 26th of this month, and that alone is cause for recognition, but in Merrell's case, that only scratches the surface because, as you mentioned, Merrell Bradley is a veteran of the Korean War. Merrell served in the United States Army from 1950 to 1957. In June of 1950, North Korea invaded South Korea, and the United States fought, along with the South Korean Army, to repel the invading force. The United States suffered almost 34,000 battle fatalities during this three-year war, but of all of the brutal and costly battles of the Korean War, the Battle of the Chosin Reservoir is considered by many the most violent small-unit fighting in the history of American warfare. During this 17-day battle, over 17,000 United States Marines and soldiers were killed, wounded, or reported missing in action. And as if this desperate fighting were not enough, the weather also played a very deadly role in the battle. During the fighting, a cold front from Siberia descended over the Chosin Reservoir, and the temperature plunged to as low as negative 35 degrees Fahrenheit. The cold weather was accompanied by frozen ground, created considerable danger of frostbite, icy roads, weapon malfunctions, medical supplies froze, morphine, syrettes had to be defrosted in the medics' mouths before they could be injected into the wounded and dying, and frozen blood plasma was useless on the battlefield. Merrell Bradley not only fought bravely and survived this dreadful battle, but he was wounded by gunfire in addition to suffering the agony and deprivations the weather and general conditions provided. But survive, he did, and after the war, I'm sorry, after the war, Merrell returned to the States and relocated here to Colorado in 1994. For the past eight years, Merrell and his wife Anne have faithfully attended Highland Bible Church here in Woodland Park, which is where I've had the privilege to meet and get to know Merrell and Anne. So in conclusion, I'd like to thank you all again for giving me this chance to tell you about Merrell Bradley and to invite you to honor his service to his country and to help us celebrate his 90th birthday. Thank you.
Very much appreciated. I've got a proclamation recognizing Mr. Bradley, and then we will go from there. Whereas, Merrell Bradley was born in Topeka, Kansas, on March 26, 1928, and whereas on June 25, 1950, the Korean War began when President Harry S. Truman committed the United States military to a United Nations effort to stop North Korea's annexation of South Korea. And whereas, between the start of the North of the Korean War and July 27, 1953, approximately 5,720,000 Americans served in the military, many of whom were stationed in Korea, and the Korean War cost our nation dearly, taking more than 33,000 lives. And whereas, the Battle of the Chosin Reservoir in North Korea is considered the most violent small-unit fighting in the history of American warfare. And whereas, much of the 17-day battle took place during a Siberian cold front, dropping the temperatures to minus 35 degrees Fahrenheit. And whereas, Merrell Bradley bravely fought in and was wounded by gunfire during this devastating battle. And whereas, Merrell Bradley will be turning 90 years old on March 26, 2018. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Neil Levy, Mayor of the City of Woodland Park, do hereby proclaim March 26, 2018, as Merrell Bradley Day. Mr. Bradley, are you comfortable coming up, or are you comfortable right there?
Well...
Comfortable right there?
(laughing)
I can see that. I can see that. You know, this is probably, thank you, this is probably one of the greatest honors I've had as mayor of our community. Can't tell you how much that council, our whole community, and I'm sure people throughout the country, recognize and value the, you know, the service to our country and the service to our people. And so, that said, I'm fortunate today to maybe get to take a picture with you and also to give you our, kind of our highest medal, and that's the Mayor's Medal. There you go, sir. But I'll just give this to you, so you don't have to put it on. Absolutely, if you'd like to. And maybe we can hold this up, and I don't know, these guys, I don't know what works best. Is this okay?
Yeah.
Here you go, sir. I'll let you hold this. Thank you. Suzanne, do you need this, or does he get to keep?
It's his to keep.
Thank you again, very, very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you, young lady.
He wouldn't be here without you, I'm sure. Okay. It's about as good as it can get to start a meeting, isn't it? Just one more time. Okay, we'll move on to item number 3B, and appointments to the Planning Commission and the Board of Adjustment, and Suzanne.
Thank you, Mayor Levy. This evening, as the mayor said, we have appointments to the Planning Commission and the Board of Adjustment. On the Planning Commission, there's one vacant position, and that is the result of the passing of Mr. Steve Stannard. That term needs to be filled. It's just a one-year term. That's where you just fill, you just fill in the rest of his terms, excuse me. The second appointment is to the BOA, the BOA, and that is, we have one person interested in that, that's Carrie Kilgore. When talking about the Planning Commission applicants, we have three applications for that one spot. We have Mr. Mike Stinner, Mr. James Baker, and Mr. Lee Brown. I know Mr. Stinner is here, I'm not sure if Mr. James Baker and, James Baker's here, how about Lee Brown? Is he here with us? Okay. So all three are in the audience this evening, if you want to ask them any questions and everything like that, and we'll take them individually because we have to interview.
Okay, and is Kip going to be our escort? We're going to do them one at a time, sequester, or keep everybody here?
Your desire.
Um, yeah, let's sequester them. So why don't we start with Mr. Stinner, since he's first on the list, and Kip, if you'll take Mr. Baker, Mr. Brown, and we will go from there. Mike, if you'd like to come forward, and Suzanne, do you have a copy of those applications?
I do.
Could I?
Yes.
Thank you. Well, certainly Mike's no stranger to us. Welcome, sir, and I'm going to let you start, and we'll go from there.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council, staff. My name is Michael Stinner, I live at 1140 Michael Lane in Woodland Park.
Thanks, Council. Questions? Who would like to start? Nobody raising their hand, so I will. Easy question. Why are you here today?
Neil, I'd like to become part of this council, well, commission, to help bring Woodland Park forward. There's a lot of things changing, town is growing, and I'd like to be a part of that.
Okay. Yeah, go ahead, Ken.
It looks like you have a lot of good experience here. How do you relate your experiences to how it will help in Planning Commission?
Well, starting with my education, I have a degree in architecture, part of my studies surrounded that, but in the meanwhile, I've been active as a project manager for the last 25 years in the construction industry. You have to forgive me, I'm getting over the same crud that everyone else seems to I've been active in communities where I've lived before, not necessarily in that respect, but I was a battalion chief of the fire department, in doing so, I was involved in inspections. I was involved indirectly in some planning, in terms of safety and access, these were mountain communities. That's part of my background.
Good. Good. Sir Mayor, thank you. I noticed you're on the Personnel Board, well, notice, we put you on there, but is your intention, I think you can't be on both, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so you would have to choose one or the other, I would assume. You're at this point willing to forego the Personnel Board?
Actually, it was a question that I had for you all tonight. I made, I did make a commitment to the Personnel Board, and if there is a conflict, I don't want to put more work on the council at this point with another vacancy. My choice would be to remain on the Personnel Board, and I guess I'll have to wait a year to apply for this one.
What if we don't want you to do that? Would you consider it?
I would consider it.
It's not that much more work for you.
My first commitment is to the Personnel Board.
Understand. How many times have you met on the Personnel Board?
We met once, to basically, to figure out exactly who and what we were. It's the first time the board had ever met in, I believe, the history of the community.
I might argue that you might be more valuable on planning, but that's my own, that's my own path. Tell me this, Mike, if you had to characterize our biggest challenge moving forward, you've been here a couple of years, what would you say it is? Relative to planning?
In terms of planning, I mean, clear plan that the community has investment in and is aware of, where people know ordinances are kept up, the purposes of ZDPs, and the plan itself, having a, having the community be an active part in our next plan, which I believe is coming up just in a couple of years.
Good. Chuck?
Have you looked at the comprehensive plan?
I have.
Any comments?
At this point, I think it's too elastic. I think if we have a plan, the plan, the decisions for that plan were made with good reason, we need to follow the plan. There are reasons for exceptions, but they, those need to be exceptions.
All right. Thank you. Anybody else? So before we move forward, I guess, you want to stick to your original plan and step aside, or would you like to be considered?
I do want to step aside at this point.
Okay.
Thank you.
We appreciate it.
But you'll see me a year or so when the next position opens.
And when we start the comprehensive plan rewrite.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you, sir. Thanks for being here.
Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Mike. Appreciate it. Okay, can you bring James Baker? Good evening, Mr. Baker, how are you?
Quite well.
Just give us your name and address to start, if you would. You can move that microphone up if you'd like.
Okay, everybody hear me okay? I'm Jim Baker, James Baker, live at 910 South Park Street, and I'd moved here about three or four years ago. My family moved here, my parents moved to the Colorado Springs area about 30 years ago, and I visited quite a lot, and also, there were a lot of orienteering maps made in the area on an Olympic grant, because it's an Olympic-recognized sport, and that's our facility, so I'd been out in the woods all up and about around here for a good 25 years of that. Currently, I'm a semi-retired software developer. I'm also a recently Guild-certified Feldenkrais practitioner, so offering movement lessons in town here through Parks and Rec individually. I'm also a member of search and rescue, and I've been on the Main Street Design Committee for several months, I've been on that, and that's part of how I got to know Sally Riley, and worked with her on the parking audit and the walkability audit, and some of the preparation for those, and so I've come to be a little bit interested in what's happening in town. She thought, based on what I've been doing, I might be interested in this, so I decided to apply, and a good way to get into knowing a little bit more about what's happening in the city and being involved.
Sounds good. I'll start with the first question. In your opinion, what's your best qualification to hold this seat?
Well, I think I've had good interactions with the business people when I was preparing for the parking audit, going and meeting them, talking with them, developing the, listening to what their concerns were. I think it's probably important on a planning commission to do a lot of active listening, because otherwise, it could seem very confrontational. I think listening and then asking questions about the impacts, potential impacts of their proposal, seems like an important approach. I've been on Board of Directors of a number of different orienteering organizations, US Orienteering Federation, Alberta Orienteering Association, several clubs. I've been on a number of volunteer organizations for the Flight of Homeland Security.
Thank you. Phil?
Garmin, or GPS, or a real compass?
I, well, I tell you, it's gotten awfully easy to use one of these things with all the topo, we've got all the topo maps of the county on here, and it's so easy, but when the rain sprinkles on, it's good to know how to read a map and have that available, so.
James, what is your familiarity with the comprehensive plan?
I haven't had a deep dive into the comprehensive plan. It's certainly been mentioned at some of the Main Street, maybe some other places, but I don't have deep knowledge of that.
Chuck?
Are you an active member of Teller County Search and Rescue?
I am, yes, and I've been on recent missions, was one only a few days ago.
Okay, good. And you intend to stay active?
I hope to, yeah. I've certainly been active in a number of different roles in that. I think the orienteering that I've done for 40 years helps quite a lot with that, a lot of ease of wandering around in the woods in the middle of the night and...
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Council, any other questions? Mr. Baker, we appreciate you being here.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening.
How are you, sir? If you'll just give us your name and address?
Lee Brown, 1111 King's Crown Road.
Great, well, thank you for being here, thank you for your application and your interest. Just start with this, why are you here, and what do you feel your qualifications are for this job?
Well, I'm here, I'm a relatively new resident of Woodland Park, three years, but I just retired in the last couple of months. I've had a lot of travel in my work, such in the past, so now I'm able to serve on a regular basis, and I'd like to do that. I have experience, I believe, in the area of planning that could be helpful. I am an attorney, but probably may be more important. In my previous place of residence in a small city in the Dallas-Fort Worth area, I served for a number of years on the zoning Board of Adjustment, then ultimately the Planning Commission, and chaired that, basically for the last 14 or 15 years that I was there in the city. So I had a chance to work on the comprehensive plan for the city, overseeing the preparation of that, we had a consultant doing a lot of the technical work, revisions of that plan, and as a small city, we didn't have the advantages we have here of a planning department that provides a lot of, obviously, the bulk of the technical work that goes into the planning and development process, so that, there is a need for me to spend probably much more detailed work on planning, planning documents, and other matters that came before the Planning Commission in that city.
What was the size of your city?
About 2,500 people.
Great, thank you.
What is your familiarity with our comprehensive plan?
Excuse me?
What is your familiarity with our comprehensive plan?
Simply having looked, sort of having looked through it briefly.
John?
On the question relative to what are the three most pressing issues facing the city of Woodland Park, you list as number two, supporting responsible balance of growth that includes affordable housing. What do you think you could do to get some affordable housing built in this community?
Well, the role of the, the role of the Planning Commission is, and as you folks are all very familiar with, is advisory. The, really, the role of the Planning Commission is to, is to make certain that the development takes place in accordance with the ordinances that are in place, as the City Council has adopted. As there is interest, potential interest from the City Council, the Planning Commission members may have a role in making recommendations for changes in that, but essentially, the commission is not going to cause housing, obviously, or any other development to happen. Instead, it will make certain that there is a smooth process, the administrative processes work, and that desires by development consistent with the ordinances and as properly planned can be facilitated.
Thank you.
Can you state some of your successes when you were Chair?
I think among the major, among the major successes was that there's a relatively few, relatively few controversies.
That's good.
The city was primary, the city was primarily residential, we had several, just several small areas for commercial, and even very tiny area for industrial development. We provide some revisions to our ordinances to control that in the way that the City Council wished to do. There's some building, particularly, there's some building articulation ordinances that we put in place, which resulted in the buildings being built in a manner that appeared more desirable in the view of the City Council.
Did you have, in that community, did you have a lot of multi-use buildings?
We did not.
You did not?
It's the, the city, the city was two square miles surrounded by the city of Arlington, Texas, which is a lot, primarily, actually, you may have all heard of it, is the place where Jerry Jones has his stadium.
Oh, gotcha, yeah, so half the stadium takes up half the place, right? And then, how do you feel about multi-use?
I think, I think typically, typically, it's desirable. Once again, consist, it's only going to happen if the economics of it makes sense, and the ordinances of the city facilitate it within whatever scope is generally consistent with the council's view.
Great, thank you. Anybody else? Mr. Brown, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for being here, and we will have a decision soon.
Sure, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. So, Council, you've got a paper ballot, and we just need your first choice, and we are picking from either James Baker or Lee Brown.
Thank you.
Levy votes for Brown, Harvey votes for Brown, Carr votes for Brown, Matthews votes for Brown, Sonnier votes for Brown, Sawyer votes for Brown, and Schaefer votes for Brown.
The motion, it's 7-0, with Mr. Brown being appointed. And is that for one year, or? This is for one year to fill out Mr. Stannard's term, and I'm prepared, Mayor, to swear him in this evening.
Do you want to do both at once?
Sure, absolutely. And the, the next one, for the BOA, the recommendation comes from the Board of Adjustment to appoint Lois DeVoe, who is on there now, as an alternate, to put, make her a permanent member, and then appoint Carrie Kilgore as the alternate member. And Ms. Kilgore's in the audience.
Understand what we have, Council? And Ms. Kilgore will be an alternate, we can interview her if you'd like, or we can just follow the process.
Move to appoint Ms. DeVoe as the permanent member, and Ms. Kilgore as the alternate.
Thank you. Suzanne?
Thank you. Carr?
Yes.
Harvey? Yes. Levy?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Sonnier?
Yes.
Sawyer?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much. So, Marie, if you would come up, and Mr. Brown, if you would come up. Congratulations to both of you. And Suzanne?
Thank you. I'm going to meet you right down there.
I'm getting better.
Oh, I'm ready, yeah. Yeah, it really is. This is a fraction of what she did. Yeah. No, this, she was asked to identify the same issues, and I was, I was going to say, I was thinking about it, asking her a question, but I just let it go. So, uninitiated statement, I still have a comment if I want to. She's, she's like, well, that's what I'm carrying. Yeah. I did read, I did read her. Can we have a talk if he wants to?
Thank you, Suzanne. While these two are signing, I want to encourage, Mr. Baker, first of all, thanks very much for being here. We really appreciate it. This is going to be a one-year term. We are always looking for great representatives for our community, and you appear to be a great one, so let me encourage you to come back to us, and we'd love to have you part of anything that you'd like to do. So, thanks very much, and Michael, obviously, we look forward to seeing you up here again. Okay, thanks very much. You good, Suzanne?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, hey, you bet. Just wanted to make sure. All right, thanks very much. Congratulations to our two new appointees, and we move on to the consent calendar, and Suzanne?
Thank you, Mayor Levy. This evening, we have two items on the consent calendar. The first being the approval of the minutes of the March 1, City Council meeting, and the second being the approval of the February 2018 Statement of Expenditures.
Counsel, any questions? If not, we will call for a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Move approval of consent calendar as presented.
Second. Thank you. Suzanne?
Thank you. Harvey?
Yes.
Levy?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Sonnier?
Yes.
Sawyer?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Carr?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Suzanne. And moving right along, we move on to unfinished business, and the discussion of hiring new city manager and our city attorney, Aaron Smith.
Thank you. Mayor and council members, I want to provide you some background to item 5A1, and then I will provide for you a recommended form of.
6A1.
6A1, and then provide you a recommended form of motion. So, the background, in accordance with Counsel's direction, that the city seek proposals from two human resources consulting firms, recommended by employment law expert Marnie Kloster, and one firm that the city had worked with before on human resources matters, who had been recommended by Searsa, who is the city's insurance provider, for services including developing selection procedures and providing training and giving other aid to council in connection with hiring a new city manager. The city did request proposals. As a result of this procurement process, the city received one proposal from CPS HR Consulting. The recommended motion is to approve the contract with CPS HR Consulting in the amount not to exceed, and here I will insert the amount $22,050, which would include the special services, and authorize the mayor to sign the contract, subject to final review by the city attorney. That would be the form of the motion.
Counsel? Need somebody to make that motion, if you'd like.
I will make the motion, but I have one question. If approved tonight, would that go into effect immediately?
It would not. The city attorney, I would be delegated by this authorization to work with the consultant on finalizing the form of the contract, and then upon that finalization, by this motion, the mayor would have the authority to sign.
Then I would move to approve the contract to hire CPS HR. Does that mean?
Somebody's phone.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a second?
Second.
Kenny, thank you. Motion and a second. Any other discussion, Counsel?
Yeah, if not.
Suzanne?
Thank you. Levy?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Sonnier?
Yes.
Sawyer?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Carr?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Counsel. The second item is a housekeeping matter, and that is to acknowledge instructions given the city clerk on posting the city manager job announcement. While no formal action is necessary, I will list the sites the city clerk posted on and have Counsel acknowledge this list and reaffirm direction to the city clerk by polling Counsel. So, the list is, and that is in front of Counsel, these sites, the International City County Administrators Site, the Colorado Municipal League Site, the city website, city Facebook, National League of Cities, the International Institute of Municipal Clerks, Blastdoor.com, ManagersCrossing.com, and Indeed.com. And then, Counsel, and Mayor, with your permission, I will poll you individually. Is that, Counsel is fine with that? So, Mayor Levy, then, do you acknowledge this list and just reaffirm the direction to the city clerk?
Yes.
And the same question for Mayor Pro Tem Harvey?
Yes.
Same question for Councilman Carr?
Yes.
Same question for Councilman Matthews?
Yes.
Same question for Councilman Sonnier?
Yes.
Same question for Councilman Sawyer?
Yes.
And same question for Councilman Schaefer?
Yes.
Thank you so much. Counsel, there is one other item I'd like to raise with you, and that is that the posting on the listed sites expired on March 7, except for Indeed.com, which goes on through April 1. And at this time, you may want to, Counsel, consider whether or not to re-up, repost on some of the sites where the posting has expired. And I would leave that for your deliberation and your determination at this point.
How many resumes do we have so far?
We have 92, sir.
Noel? I'll go ahead and make a recommendation. Let's go ahead and, because of the cost, what was the total cost to renew all of these?
It was approximately, well, the initial cost was approximately $3,600.
Okay, so if we renew all of them, then we would be paying that exact amount, so I suggest we look at the websites that we've got the most resumes from, and ICMA, which I believe is $600, NotCML, city website, yes, city Facebook, yes, IIMC, which is free anyways, and Indeed.com. That way, we're only paying for the one website that's actually giving us the most applicants. That's my recommendation, Counsel.
And that would be through April 1?
Correct, through April 1, but I don't know how ICMA is. We might have to just do a 30-day, but we can always remove the post April 1.
And Suzanne, you can look into ICMA and see if we extend the post, if we can possibly get some discounts since we're only going to post it for another two weeks.
Yes, I'll do that tomorrow.
Thank you. I believe that encompasses one paid site and all the rest of the free sites, is that true?
That's correct. ICMA is the only one that will be paid.
Any other questions?
And just to, just to let the community know that the majority of our applicants came from ICMA and Indeed.com, so really, those were the main focus.
However, those from Indeed.com were generally not qualified.
And you can simply do this just by consensus and direction.
Yes. Everybody agree?
Yes.
Great, thanks, Noel.
Thank you.
Good, Suzanne?
I am, thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, we move on to ordinances on initial posting, and Sally Riley.
Thank you, Mayor Levy. And Counsel members, staff, and citizens, this evening, on your desk, you have a redlined copy of ordinance number 1321. The purpose of ordinance number 1321 is to adopt the 2017 edition of Pike's Peak Regional Building Department Code, Building Code. That is this document here. And this document adopts by reference the International Building Code Suite, which includes the commercial codes, the residential codes, the mechanical codes, the fuel gas code, the International Energy Conservation Code, the existing building code, and these are all 2015 codes, as well as elevator, escalator, safety codes. And we have been working to review PPRBD's Building Code and the international codes with the Board of Review since last August, and working with the Pike's Peak Regional staff. Their intent is to implement this code on June 1, and PPRBD has seven member organizations, including, or governments, including El Paso County, the city of Colorado Springs, and then the smaller communities around El Paso. And we have a unique position with PPRBD as having an intergovernmental agreement for them to provide services, and they have been doing that a marvelous job for the last four and a half years. So, we have also met with the contractors last Tuesday for two and a half hours to discuss this. Their primary concern deals with the increased requirements with the Energy Conservation Code. So I would like to just refer you to page 2 of the ordinance, and under section 2, we have agreed to make two exceptions to the Energy Conservation Code. The first one is to delete the fenestration, which is a term for windows, U factor of .32 from the climate zone 5B per a certain table, and replace it with the U factor of .35. So what that means is that this will allow for builders to continue to use double-pane windows, as opposed to having to potentially go toward a triple-pane window or an argon-filled window. And this is on a prescriptive approach. There is also a performance approach to the energy code, and unless you have further questions about these exceptions, I won't go into those details. The second item that has been deleted from the energy code deals with a drain water heat recovery unit. So there are cost savings with both those exceptions, and yet, with the 2015 energy code, the homeowner will get a very tight and very energy-efficient home to build to with these 2015 codes.
Excuse me?
Yes.
You talking about the 2017 or the 2015?
I am talking about the 2015 International Code. The reason it's called a 2017 is because PPRBD, their edition of the building code is dated 2017. Does that make sense for you, Mr. Sonnier?
Yes.
Okay. With that, I would like to introduce to you the staff of PPRBD, and ask for the gentlemen to come up and say a few words about the process that they have been going through to review the international codes, as well as to update their 2017 edition. So Roger Lovell, Jay Einhaus, and John Welton.
Good evening, Mayor Levy and Counsel. Thank you for having us here tonight. My name is Roger Lovell, I'm the building official for Pike's Peak Regional Building, and I just, first off, I'd like to thank you for working with us. It's been a pleasure to work with, with the city of Woodland Park over the last four and a half years. As Sally touched on, we have a little bit different agreement with Woodland Park. Woodland Park is really kind of our eighth-member jurisdiction. The other jurisdictions that we serve are all served under one separate IGA, whereas we have one distinct IGA with Woodland Park. And it's like, thank you for working with us, it's been a pleasure to be part of your community, and with that, I'd like Mr. John Welton, he's kind of been the face of this code up here, so I'll let him speak. We're happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mayor Levy and Counsel members. Be happy to answer any questions that you might have in relation to the 2017 Regional Building Code, which, as Sally pointed out, adopts by reference the suite of the 2015 I codes minus the plumbing code and the national electric code, which those who are adopted at the state level.
Counsel, John? So, the relief that Woodland Park has received will allow residential units to be built for the benefit of the homeowners, avoiding a significant increase in the cost of windows, correct?
Correct. One of the advantages we have, if you will, in Woodland Park is an IGA that is only written with Woodland Park. So it doesn't include other member jurisdictions to have to buy in or sign off on those amendments. So in this particular case, we were able to do two very specific amendments to the energy code for Woodland Park and Woodland Park homeowners, one of those being the U factor amendment to the prescriptive table. The 2015 energy code prescriptively requires a .32 U factor. The U factor is the heat loss allowed through the window. Moving forward, if that were not amended, this jurisdiction, the only way you could make a double-pane window work in this jurisdiction would be an argon-filled window. And at this elevation, it's very questionable on whether argon would actually work or not. So by allowing this amendment, we get away from a triple-pane window, which is a very significant cost savings. We appreciate it. It was our plan.
What does it do to the structure of the house? Do we change from a 2x4 to a 2x6? What are the off factors required in insulation, wall, ceilings?
Well, there's a couple of different options that the 2015 offers that the current 2009 edition that we're on right now does not. Potentially about five to six different options, if you look at everything combined, on how they eventually make the house work in the code. If we go off the prescriptive table, you do have two options. One is R20, prescriptively in the walls, which would require a 2x6 wall. The other option in the prescriptive table, you could do a 2x4 wall with R13, as long as there was R5 insulation continuous on the outside. We appreciate it. It was our pleasure.
What does it do to the structure of the house? Do we change from a 2x4 to a 2x6? What are the R factors required in insulation, wall, ceilings?
Well, there's a couple of different options that the 2015 offers that the current 2009 edition that we're on right now does not. Potentially about five to six different options if you look at everything combined on how they eventually make the house work in the code. If we go off the prescriptive table, you do have two options. One is R20 prescriptively in the walls, which would require a 2x6 wall. The other option in the prescriptive table, you could do a 2x4 wall with R13 as long as there was R5 insulation continuous on the outside of the structure. The flip side of that would be the performance path. This is a calculated method to where you can give a little here, you know, and add a little extra in other areas to end up with a passing score. In that particular case, we've seen contractors that also build in other jurisdictions, basically get there through multiple different paths. Not going to be able to make a 2x3 wall work, but they could still make a 2x4 wall work in that instance as well. So even out of the prescriptive table, there are still two paths for wall insulation.
So you're going an exterior envelope, EPIS or other products?
Yes.
To bring up the R factor?
Yes.
What about overhead? How are you looking at the attics and insulation?
Insulation in the attic per the prescriptive table is going to be required in R49. Currently, we're in an R38 requirement based on the '09. So adding up what we're looking at in the prescriptive table, now without any, without any additional exceptions, and we'll get into that, prescriptively it would be R49. There is a code path though, that does allow a reduction in the R value of the ceiling. Now back to the 2009 level of an R38, if the home is insulated at attic level, all the way over the top plate of the exterior wall. So that could be achieved by an elevated fuel truss and then insulation all the way over the exterior wall. It's that reduction back down to the current level that we're at in the 2009 energy code.
Elevated fuel truss, you would be raising the trusses up to allow the air to flow across the insulation that is required to go over the exterior wall. Am I correct?
Correct.
What do you estimate the cost to a 3,000 square foot home would be in percentage? Do you feel a 10% increase in cost, 15% or any increase at all?
Well, the easy answer for me on that one is, we don't have any association with the cost. That would be up to industry to actually look at, you know, for calculations. All we see is valuations where the permits are full of what the cost of the house is going to be built. We don't actually get line items to be able to see if a 2009 house is built of these line items, or the 2015 will be built to.
Will there need to be air replacement because of tightness in the home?
If there is a certain level of reach with the air changes per hour, then yes, whole house mechanical ventilation will be required for the IRC to vent the house.
Yes. Thank you. Kenny?
I assume to meet that code for the roof, the SIP panel, structural insulated panels extending over the wall to the soffit would meet that requirement?
As long as the SIP panel met the R38 requirement?
Right.
And that SIP panel extended all the way over the exterior wall, that would work.
Great.
Generally, what we've seen, we don't see many SIP panel projects submitted to the prescriptive table. That's going to generally be based on the performance path. So that one's a little tougher to answer because--
Performance would be fine, I can tell you that.
Yeah.
So number one, I should have stayed at a Holiday Express last night, so I can understand a lot of this.
I should have too.
Okay. I'm reading this and I'm seeing international fuel gas code. Can you elaborate on that a little bit?
Yes, the international fuel gas code is the national code that regulates venting of--
So we, so when I put, so were you talking like, I know California, they have these big cups on the end of the gas pumps. Are we talking to add those? Because I don't think we have them now.
No. This is fuel gas as far as natural gas--
Okay.
--propane, any appliance that is run from propane, natural gas. There are weird situations, eventually, with meth gas in hospitals. So it's, this strictly regulates appliances that are fuel fired. And by fuel fired, I mean some type of gas.
So what's the change?
The change in the--
From the 2009, it sounds like.
Very minimal.
Very minimal, okay.
Very minimal in the fuel gas requirements has changed.
Okay.
There are very minimal changes in the international mechanical code. There are, and actually, I guess one point to make is, one of the nice things about the, a couple of the 2015 code books, the code has actually caught up with amendments that we've already had in our local code. So we've been able to reduce our code and take amendments out because the code finally caught up with those. And the mechanical and fuel gas code is a great example. We were able to actually reduce more amendments out of the local RBC in the mechanical code and fuel gas code than anything else. So there are some advantages to the newer code because it gets us a little bit more insight into what we've been writing all along. From the international residential code standpoint, some changes, yes. One of the biggest changes that we're really happy to be able to do this year is the adoption of chapters 13 through 43 of the IRC. So that is actually chapters that regulate mechanical systems, exhaust, fuel gas for single family homes. Up until this point, to where we've been able to adopt this code, we have been using the commercial code books for single family homes. Now we've finally been able to align ourselves with the state adopted codes, where they have adopted the residential chapters. And now we can expand that to basically, to build a single family home, you need one book plus the energy code. So it's a great advantage, in our opinion, you know, from the standpoint of, if you're a single family contractor, right now you've got to have five different books to build that house. If you want to cross-reference anything, you've got to buy the books. So five simple books at an average $169 a book. Moving forward, you've got to buy two books on this code, so you'll be able to build a single family home. All books primarily have one book that covers everything but the energy code.
So this sounds like the code enforcement would be a lot easier.
We hope so.
Yeah, because instead of going through five books, you can, you know, you can look at things and reference two books, so. How many other, this is Pike's Peak, and we're the only IGA, you said?
No, you're the only independent IGA.
Okay, so because of our altitude, we have separate, we have different codes? I guess what makes us so different?
Because you're not an original member--
Oh, okay.
--or IGA. So our original, RBD was started in 1966 through IGA between the city and the county.
Right.
A few years later, the other five members came on, which is Fountain, Greenmount Falls, Manu Springs, Almer Lake, and Monument. So that makes up our primary set. In 2013, we were fortunate enough to be able to hit an opportunity and join forces with Woodland Park, enter into an agreement and provide services to this jurisdiction. So because of that, we have our own little independent contractor, IGA, if you would, with Woodland Park. And it does provide us not extreme flexibility, but it does provide us a little bit more flexibility for Woodland Park, simply because we don't have to put what we're putting in front of you in front of other jurisdictions.
Well, thank you. I think it's great. So all the others have already accepted their, the new codes?
Four of the seven.
Four of the seven.
City of Colorado Springs and El Paso County have already done full approval.
Okay.
And then we are almost concluded with the process to Almer Lake and Monument at this point. We'll have them on board by the end of March most likely, and then by the end of April into the very first part of May, the other member jurisdictions will be on board as well, following up on Sally's comment about our hopeful implementation date is June 1st, which at that point, we're going to allow a six month grace period up until December 1st to allow a very long adjustment time to contractors--
Right up.
--you know, subtrades and allow supplemental or permit on either old 2009 code, which is adopted by the 2011 RBC, or the new code.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Council, remember we're on initial posting--
I understand that.
--and we'll have an opportunity to talk about this in two weeks. Anything else presentation wise, Sally?
Yes, please. I also wanted to mention that in the audience is the chairperson of our Board of Review, Matt McVicker. And I also see a few other members here, Jim Olson, Dick Carpenter, and Jeff Cagill, who have worked on this very hard. I know it is the first reading, but it's legislative and we have the experts here tonight, so I wanted to make sure that you did have all your questions answered. And I also know that there are a few contractors here in the audience that would like to speak. We do want to move this forward, but I would like to give the opportunity for others to speak, if you don't mind.
Okay, thank you Sally. Well, we can start with Carl Anderson. I have him signed up. And then if anybody else would like to speak after Mr. Anderson, we will go in that direction on Sally's recommendation.
Hi, I'm Carl Anderson, 602, County Route 511, Divide. I'm also a contractor here in Teller County. So I do have concerns about this new energy code in particular. It does add a substantial cost to building houses here with the market effects. And I'd like to say that, also, I'm a member of the Board of Review for Teller County. Teller County adopted the 2015 IRC about a year and a half ago. Teller County opted out of the 2015 energy code and stuck with the 2009 energy code, thus serving saving people building in the county area what I've heard to be anywhere from $8,000 to $12,000 on an average house. That's a substantial amount to increase houses with one code cycle. And that's just an energy portion of this code. As you heard RBD say, we are our own jurisdiction here and they can amend their code any way they see fit, really with us. With that being said, I also have noticed on the Board of Review that there have been no issues that have come forward to us in regards to us opting out of the 2015 energy code using the 2009. So it is possible to do this. It will save your new residents or people building houses a substantial amount of money. And I would ask that you consider recommending that. Before I take any questions, I would like to thank Sally Riley and her team for having this process and allowing us to speak here and voice our opinions on this new code cycle. I think it's important. We all know affordable housing and the price of living here is not cheap. And I'd like to see us hold back a little bit and continue to, you know, give opportunity to first time home buyers, to people looking to retire, to not increase that cost of houses that fast.
Great, thank you sir.
I don't know if we, do we want questions?
Not now.
Yeah.
I don't think so. Thank you for being here.
You're welcome.
Anybody else from that group that Sally mentioned like to come forward? Any other input? Okay. If not, then council, we need a motion to consider ordinance 1321 on initial posting.
Motion to approve or motion to consider ordinance 1321?
Second.
Thank you. Suzanne?
Matthews?
Yes.
Swaye?
Yes.
Sawyer?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Carr?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Levy?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries again, Ms. Lee.
Thank you.
And if I may add, that the public hearing is set for April 19th. Because this is an ordinance adopting codes by reference, there is a longer period of time for advertising. So we will have a public hearing next month on April 19th. Thank you.
Thank you. Sally, before you move on to ordinance 1322, I just want to thank the gentlemen from Regional. For my part, I'm not in the business at all, but I hear tremendous things relative to what you all have done over the last four and a half years. So just know that we're very, very appreciative and thanks for all your hard work. I just, I hear great things.
Thank you. It's our pleasure and I just, I really appreciate, I'm a native of Colorado Springs. We're up here, Woodland Park's close to my heart, and I guess I probably get up here as well. Thank you for working with us.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Okay, also on your desk is a redline for ordinance 1322. This is also amending the construction chapter, section 1504. And as we were going through the adoption of the building code and reviewing the construction chapters, we realized that we had not kept up to pace with the onsite wastewater treatment system codes, which are actually adopted by Teller County. So those codes look like this document. And the OWTS, which is also known to most of us as a septic system, is by state regulations. And the counties adopt these regulations from the state and implement them because they are the jurisdiction who is authorized to have an environmental health division and a board of health. And actually, the county commissioners serve as the board of health. And when a community or municipality within the county does not have an environmental health division or a board of health, then it falls to the county. And so this ordinance is designed to update to the current Teller County Environmental Health OWTS system regulations. And the reason for the redline is that upon review by our city attorney, when we adopt codes by reference, we also have to specifically include the penalties section of these codes. So that's a non-substantial change to the ordinance for this evening on first reading. And I would just recommend that you approve this on first reading and set the public hearing for 1812. Be happy to answer any questions that I might be able to answer. I don't have anybody technical here, but we can move forward to the public hearing accordingly. And I'll have somebody technical here for that.
Sounds good to me. Questions? Motion?
Motion to approve or motion to consider ordinance 1322?
Thank you. Suzanne?
Swaye?
Yes.
Sawyer?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Carr?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Levy?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries again, Ms. Lee. Thank you.
Thank you Sally, thank you Suzanne. And we'll move on to public hearings and Laura Pellegrino.
Thank you Mayor Levy, Board of Representatives, Laura Pellegrino. I am the city planner. We remain with council, staff, members of the audience. I just get to turn it off.
Is that better? Thank you, sorry about that. Again, my name is Laura Pellegrino. I'm the city planner. And tonight, we are here for the public hearing on ordinance number 1318. So this is an ordinance-- So this is an ordinance, number 1318, series number 2018, to vacate a 10-foot utility and drainage easement between lots three and four of Paradise of Colorado filing number two. Both these lots have an address of 270 and 280, Thunder Ridge Drive. We are here tonight on March 15th for the second reading and public hearing of this legislative item. The first reading was at 7:00 PM on March 1st of 2018. So this is a very short, small, large-scale map showing the location of the site on the east end of the city, indicated by a star on this map. So this is Highway 24 curving around the city, Highway 67 going north, and you can see the site here on the east end of the city on Thunder Ridge Road. This is a closer-up, larger-scale map showing the two lots, 270 and 280. In here, you see Thunder Ridge Road going towards the east. This map is a more up-to-date and current aerial photo showing some of the existing construction around these two lots. These two lots, indicated within this circle here, are currently vacant. You can see that they're fairly wooded lots, much like you see in the neighborhood anyway in this area. You can see the homes in this neighborhood have been former show homes, parade homes. The applicant, the owner of these two lots, is Park State Bank, and they are applying to vacate the lot line between these two lots, making this lot one lot. But before counsel tonight is the application to vacate the easement that is associated with these two lots. It is shown here on this exhibit. The lot line that they propose to vacate is this dark line here, and the easement is five feet on either side of this lot line, which is a typical easement that is applied during the plat process for many lots in the subdivision that we see today. So we have had no issues with this review. The recommendation before counsel tonight is to approve ordinance 1318, series 2018, as presented. It is an ordinance vacating utility and drainage easements between lots three and four, Paradise of Colorado filing number two. Staff does not have any concerns or issues with this particular request. The applicant, Mr. Chuck Mahoney of Park State Bank, is here tonight. I think he is. Chuck is here. If there are any questions of the applicant in terms of why they want to vacate this lot line, or any other questions counsel may have, he is here to answer any questions. That concludes my report. Are there any questions for me?
Thank you, Laura. Counsel, anybody like to ask any questions of Mr. Mahoney today? If not, we're in public hearing, and anybody in the audience is more than welcome to come forward and speak if you'd like. This would be your chance. Okay. If not, counsel, I need a motion to consider 1318, please.
Motion to approve ordinance 1318 as written.
Second.
Thank you. Suzanne?
Sawyer.
Yes.
Schaefer.
Yes.
Carr.
Yes.
Harvey.
Yes.
Levy.
Yes.
Matthews.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Suzanne. Okay, Laura.
Thank you, Mayor Levy. Again, my name is Laura Pellegrino, and I am the city planner. I am here now presenting ordinance number 1319 and ordinance number 1320. We'll take these two items together if counsel does not object. With ordinance number 1319, it is an ordinance regarding an access utility and drainage easement across city property, the Gold Hill Water Tank Site at 1350 West Midland Avenue. And it is an easement that benefits the owners of Lot 6, Block 1, Highland Hills Edition Number 1, with an address of 1339 West Midland Avenue. The second ordinance that we're here tonight to consider is ordinance number 1320, series 2018. It is an ordinance accepting a quick claim deed for tract of land approximately 0.29 acres in size, tract of land known as the Cowitz remaining tract. We did have first reading on March 7th of 2018, and tonight on March 15th, we are here for the second reading and public hearing of these two ordinances. This is a very brief map, very large-scale map, showing the location of both the site in question, Lot 6, which is 1339, where the single-family residence is. Also shows the location of the water tank further to the north and to the west of this particular lot. Again, Highway 24 arcing around the city, Highway 67 going north. And this, I'm not sure if you can see, shows, gives you a really good idea of some of the topography in this area. It's a very steep site, much like the western slopes of the city. The eastern slopes of the city are steep as well. So this is an aerial photo of about the same scale, showing you the location of Lot 6, where the single-family residence is, which is this yellow rectangular trapezoid right here. Also shows you, may be a little bit more difficult to see, but the tank, the water tank, is this structure right here with the arrow pointing to it. Again, we are on the extreme west end of the city here. This may be one of the residences that is as far west as we get, if you don't count the north end of the city. This is a close-up, showing the water tank at the north end of this image, and then it shows the 1339, the single-family residence here in this corner. It also shows the rough location of the particular lot in question. Of note, here is Midland Avenue coming, going west, and then it changes from a paved road to a gravel road, where it turns into the city property, the southern end of this property, known as the Hollin Track. Then it curves up, goes out into what is known as the Cowitz Track, and then it continues further up all the way to the water tank site. At about this point, right here, it turns into this private driveway that accesses 1339, the last Midland Avenue. And it's at this point where it changes from gravel to private driveway that the single-family residents, the owners of that residence have created. So this gives you an idea. Certainly the vegetation, also there's... All right. I think the batteries on the mic are going, so I'll try to speak louder. This is a depiction of the tract of land that is related to, for the easement. This is the Hollin Track down below here. This is the Cowitz Track. The entire tract that this easement applies to is shown in the double dash, the double dash line that you can see outlined heavy here. So this is the legal description and the graphic depiction that will go with the easement. And as you can see, here is the end of Midland Avenue. It travels up through here, goes on towards the tank site, but curves around and then comes back to Lot 6. This is related to the legal description for ordinance 1320. This is the Cowitz remaining tract. When we first received the deeds for this, this is the land, the Hollin Track, that's out of the Cowitz Track to the north, we thought we were also getting this little rectangular triangle here, and then it's the Cowitz remaining tract. But the applicant's... I'm sorry. Do you want me to hold it? All right. So the Cowitz remaining tract, we had thought, we had received that when we received the deeds in the late 1950, 1959, actually, that came with the Cowitz and the Hollin tracks. But when the applicant went to sell this property, his 1339, single-family residence just last year, and he did a survey plat of the, an ILC of the property for the conveyance, it was discovered that the city never was conveyed this triangular piece. So we did approach the owners of this little piece of land, and they agreed to deed it to the city, and that's what we're here tonight, to accept this quick claim deed for this tract that will make this piece whole. So that's 1320. So before counsel tonight is an ordinance approving or accepting of ordinance 1319, which is an ordinance that repeals the original easement that was put in place in 2007 for ordinance number 1074 in 2007, granting an access drainage and utility easement across city land benefiting Lot 6 of Block 1, Highland Hills Edition Number 1. And we're also here to approve ordinance number 1320, which is an ordinance accepting a quick claim deed for a small tract of land known as the Cowitz remaining tract. Now, one note, the legal description for the Cowitz remaining tract had one small error in it. A correction was made. So the legal description that was attached to your packets tonight has the correct legal description, including reference to Lot 6. That was the only difference, and that is the only amendment to ordinance number 1320. So the recommendation for approval should be to approve ordinance 1320 as amended. That does conclude my presentation tonight, Mr. Mayor. And I do want to mention that the applicant's representative is here tonight. Mr. Mel March of March Surveying is here. He has done some extensive surveying about the history of this deed transaction way back from 1959 and earlier. So if you're interested in some of the history of this land, you can certainly call him up, and he'll answer all those questions. Other than that, he's able to answer any other questions you may have on this property or on these particular surveys. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Laura.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, before we go on, if you have additional questions about the history, the actual landowner or heir of the landowners in the audience tonight, Connie Carpenter, she's lived here her entire life, and if I said how many years, she would kill me after the meeting. But I know that as a child, she rode horses up there. She knows that land very well. She's the one working with her husband that allowed us to approach them and get that quick claim deed, for it amounts to about 1,200 square feet. So they've been extremely cooperative. Just more on the Cowitz family, which is Connie's mom's maiden name. She's about to turn 90. She moved here in 1937, and in 1949, she became the city editor for the Courier. She has a wealth of historical knowledge, as does Connie. So if you ever want to know anything about Woodland Park that even Al Born doesn't know, talk to Connie Carpenter. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Laura. Counsel, this looks pretty easy. You have any questions before we go to public comment? Okay. Public, you get your choice right now. Sit or come forward. We have nothing. We should take these one at a time. Suzanne? Okay, we'll take them one at a time, and should we start with B or C? Does it make any difference?
We could start with 1319.
Okay. So if I can get a motion to consider 1319, please.
I make a motion to consider 1319.
Thank you.
With the amendments?
Yeah, with the amendments.
1320's got the amendment.
Yeah, it's got the amendment.
Second. Thank you. John? Suzanne?
Schaefer.
Yes.
Carr.
Yes.
Harvey.
Yes.
Levy.
Yes.
Matthews.
Yes.
Swinier.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Suzanne. Okay, counsel, I'll ask for the same thing for ordinance number 1320.
We approve ordinance 1320 as presented.
With amendment.
With amendment?
As amended.
With amended. Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Suzanne?
Carr.
Yes.
Harvey.
Yes.
Levy.
Yes.
Matthews.
Yes.
Swinier.
Yes.
Sawyer.
Yes.
Schaefer.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Suzanne. Thanks again, Laura. And we appreciate it. And Mr. March, you may be getting some calls. Who knows? People interested in our history. Thank you for being here. Okay, we move on to new business and approving resolution number 826. And Kip Wiley.
Thank you.
Sir.
In front of you is resolution 826. This is straightforward. It's a grant of easement for a 30-foot easement that where, as you see here, the yellow circle is the area where the easement is. And here's a zoomed-in map of that area. This is over eight lots. It's lots one through four and 13 through 16 of Block 16, Foster's Edition. A water main and sewer main were installed here for residential development. There are two property owners. There's a 15-foot easement on the right-hand side and a 15-foot easement on the left-hand side of these eight lots. And the utilities are currently installed and in use, and both property owners have signed grants of easements. And this is before you to accept those grants of easements, so we can then maintain this infrastructure. I'm here to answer any questions. Recommend approval of resolution 826. And also here tonight is one of the property owners, Mr. Christians, who is here to answer questions as well.
Thank you. Counsel, do you have any questions? This looks like an easy one, Noel.
So, Kip, why are we doing this?
They installed a city water main and a sewer main, and part of the acceptance process is we need to be able to access the land on top of these mains, and there's a 30-foot public utility easement, so we can maintain these from now until the end of time.
Okay, so right now, we're not doing anything on it. The land's going to stay the way it is. It looks nice, I'm sure, and we're just going to keep it the way it is.
The land has been excavated, and those mains have been installed.
They have. Okay.
Yes. Carol?
Generally, how long after one of the sewer main or water main is put in, do we accept it from the developer or a landowner?
We have a one-year warranty period. So if anything happens within that one year, they're responsible for repairing that, and they go through our inspection process before we go under initial acceptance.
Anything else, counsel? Sounds good. Thank you, Kip. Call for motion to approve resolution number 826, please.
Motion to approve resolution 826 as written.
Second.
Thank you. Suzanne?
Harvey?
Yes.
Levy?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Swinier?
Yes.
Sawyer?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Carr?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Suzanne. Okay, we'll move on to item 9B. Is Lori Glot here? Somebody?
Bob's going to do it.
Bob Carlson. I'm sorry. I didn't know. Thank you, sir.
Yes, I am not Lori Glot. She's delivering cattle to La Hanta. So I'm Bob Carlson at 1155 Windflower Lane, Woodland Park, Colorado. And as chairman of the Main Street Board, I'm here to discuss, to seek your approval of the memorandum of understanding between the City of Woodland Park, Woodland Park Main Street, and the Department of Local Affairs' Main Street program. You recall back in December, I briefed the council with regard to responding to questions about the budget for Main Street, and one of the things I brought up at the time was the MOU. And at the time, we said that we were about to get designation from, as a designated community for DOLA, and along with that comes a new MOU from DOLA to ask for the program to sign and for the city to buy in. So that's why I'm here this evening. This is the MOU from DOLA. I've signed it on behalf of the Main Street program, and we're hoping that the mayor will sign it with city council approval on behalf of the city. You've received the draft, I mean, the MOU was before you, and you can see on page four, under paragraph C, the items that we are asking the city council to approve, that you would, your participation in the Main Street program. So I'm here to answer any questions you might have in that regard. And anyway, thank you for this opportunity to speak to each of you and the mayor.
Counsel?
Mayor, I might point out that the staff has had an opportunity to review this. It's in keeping with earlier agreements standard throughout the state, so we have no issues with what's been presented from a staff perspective.
Thank you. Carol?
And I don't believe that there are any differences in the responsibilities of the local government from the last one.
Thank you, Bob.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone have a comment before we move to approve? Okay, counsel, need a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding.
Move to approve the memorandum of understanding between the City of Woodland Park, Woodland Park Main Street, and Colorado Department of Local Affairs.
Thank you, and we have a second. Suzanne?
Levy?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Swinier?
Yes.
Sawyer?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Carr?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Mayor, before we move to the next, I'd like to ask Mr. Carlson, as the chair, there was a responsibility for Main Street to provide a periodic financial update to the
the council. Have you made arrangements with the clerk to do that update?
I don't know if we've done that yet, but we are anticipating the second meeting after the election, not the first meeting, because that's all has to do with new council business.
I've had no one contact me yet.
Okay, so, I will contact you tomorrow unless you want to take this.
Tomorrow would be good. Email would be great.
Oh, is it? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Okay, Mr. Butter.
Thanks, Mayor. Counsel will recall that when we were looking at the Eric V. Dixon Memorial, one of the concerns that the committee had was placing a memorial of this magnitude in Lyons Park, understanding that CDOT owned the majority of that area. And so, acknowledging that, we elected to place the memorial in Memorial Park. But that caused us to want to provide some historical record of our responsibility to move memorials that currently exist in Lyons Park to some future location, should CDOT need to use that. So, before you this evening is resolution 827, series 2018, that simply says, "Whereas Lyons Park is a beautiful contemplative space in the City of Woodland Park honoring those who have sacrificed their lives to protect our freedom and safety, and whereas Lyons Park is partially located on land owned by the Colorado Department of Transportation and being used with their permission, and whereas CDOT has advised the city that should transportation systems owned or maintained by the State of Colorado need to utilize that space in Lyons Park, they are fully within their rights to do so, and whereas the City of Woodland Park would ask CDOT to give advance notice of the intent to use said land. Now therefore be it resolved that the City of Woodland Park would relocate those memorials to another appropriate location as reviewed by the Park and Rec Advisory Board, recommended by the city manager, and that the funding to do so would be properly appropriated by the city council." So, counsel, my recommendation is that you would pass this resolution so that we can memorialize that process to preserve those memorials in the proper place within our community. I'm happy to answer any questions.
No questions. Public comment?
Comment?
Go ahead.
I think this is a prudent approach. We never know when that little triangle may go away. But will the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board also have an opportunity to present to the council some type of operating procedures for the use of Memorial Park for future memorials?
We can certainly ask them to do that. We can't.
We talked about this before, because it's very possible that another tribute may want to be placed in Memorial Park, and I think it's a good idea to determine how that would occur.
I think, I'm going to look at Jane, because I know she was working on gathering documents from other entities as it relates to naming different things, pavilion streets and memorials. I don't know that if it would cover how we would make decisions on that, but that's something we can certainly look at and pursue.
I mean, it's me asking that question individually. I don't know if that is the desire of the rest of the council.
It's prudent. There needs to be a process, so we'll take that on as a staff job.
Thank you, Carol. John?
Was there any discussion of timing with respect to CDOT having to notify the city a year, two years, or whatever in advance of their doing anything or wanting it back?
We've talked to them. We can certainly ask them for as much advanced notice as possible. What I understand from the transportation process, and those of you who have been involved with PPACG, a project that would have the magnitude that would cause that portion of the property to be used would be something that would have to go through the transportation improvement planning process through Pike's Peak Area Council of Governments. It would have to go through the state program. And so, those are three and 40-year processes. So, I think we would have advanced notice of when they were even considering to make an expansion there. And again, we will provide them with a copy of this, so they have it in their records as well, and hopefully, they would give us sufficient notice. Truthfully, the land is actually, there's a part that is CDOT, there's a part that's owned by the city. Where the vast majority of the improvements have been made, city property. It's actually closer to the bypass, if you will, the lane that goes from 24 to 67 that CDOT land. So, what we would move would need to be minimal, and we could do it in relatively short notice. Yes, sir.
Anybody else? Okay, motion to approve resolution number 827, please.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Suzanne?
Matthews?
Yes.
Swenier?
Yes.
Sawyer?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Carr?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Levy?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Suzanne. Okay, we will move on to public comment on items not on this agenda, and start with Michael Dalton.
I know you guys got me on a timer, so Mayor, you just let me know when I need to quit. I just wanted to address, Kip, I actually live right behind that easement, and my, at no fault of the city, my water was cut off multiple times, but at great response from the city, they showed up every time, and I went to bed knowing that it was cut off. But they were going to take care of it, and it got back on, so I want to thank Kip for that, doing that placement. I also want to thank Chrissy for adding some extra coffee back there. Our council meetings have been filling up, and the coffee was running out, so she did an awesome job with that. I want to thank Suzanne, because I've dealt with her through the election process a little bit, and the city's been doing awesome with both dealing with candidates and through this election cycle, so she's been taking an awesome approach at that. I've had multiple encounters with the police department, both in person and on social media, where one of their officers, on a regular basis, communicates with me if I ask a question, and I think that's a brilliant thing that the police department does. As we go to elect a new city manager, not elect, hire a new city manager, I just want to recognize David Butter, because he gets a lot of stuff on social media and even from council members, but I've spent a number of times where I've interviewed this man, and he loves this city. He knows this city better than most, and he could probably sit in the crowd and challenge anyone at a history quiz about the city. And he's been a great city manager for this city. And I want to thank David Butter. Mayor Levy, I heard rumors on social media, I don't know if it's true or not, that you weren't feeling very well. I pray that your health and if you're going through any illness right now, that passes quickly. I've interacted with a few of the city council members, and during this election cycle, it's interesting to see how you act with each other, and I wish I could get up here and say a lot of good things about you, like I said about our city, but I have seen most of you do nothing.
Okay. Thank you, sir. We will move on to Scott Davis.
Yeah, you're good. I'm good. Can you hear me in? I can. Thank you, Mayor. Scott Davis, 8250 Emporia Avenue, Cascade. You probably already know that by now. With the election season in full swing, I thought it would be time to hear something great about this amazing little city. The lighter side of Christmas parade was an excellent investment in the City of Woodland Park. Not only did our little city full, not only was our little city full of locals and guests from around the region, the beneficiary of the parade, the Woodland Park Pike's Peak Lions Club, earned $7,125. The Lions Club donated 100% of the $7,125 to the Colorado Lions Camp, which is three miles north of the golf course on Highway 67. The Colorado Lions Camp is an amazing 40-acre camp that caters to special needs individuals. These remarkable people get to spend a time camping in a breathtaking outdoor Colorado camp. The mission of the Colorado Lions Camp is to provide exceptional camping programs to individuals with special needs, which promote independence, challenge their abilities, and provide opportunity to discover his or her potential in a safe, positive environment. Since 1969, the Colorado Lions Camp has been providing residential camping programs in the beautiful mountains of Pike National Forest. Camp programs are offered throughout the year, including week-long summer camp sessions and weekend respite camps. The Colorado Lions Camp programs are specifically designed to meet the needs of the following campers, age 8 to senior adult, blind and vision impaired, deaf and hearing impaired, Down Syndrome, developmentally delayed, intellectual challenges, autism spectrum disorders, Asperger's Syndrome, sensory processing disorders, physical challenges or impairments, and mental disabilities. Excuse me. The Pike's Peak Woodland Park Lions Club has only 13 members, but our club was able to donate an additional $6,000 to the Colorado Lions Camp. Also, the Woodland Park Pike's Peak Lions Club donated $1,050 to our local Boy Scout Troop 43 to help them achieve their goals of community service. 100% of the donations that the Woodland Park Pike's Peak Lions Club receives is put right back into the community, helping our friends and neighbors with children's vision screening, eyeglasses, food bank support, and helping internationally with vision and vaccination programs worldwide. One last thing, the Woodland Park Pike's Peak Lions Club will be hosting its 8th Annual Donkey Basketball Tournament Thursday, April 19. The tournament will begin at 7:00 PM at the Woodland Park High School gym. Tickets are $10 for adults, $5 for youth under 18. I would like to invite the new mayor, whomever that may be, to be our honorary scooper for the night. Please join us for a fun family night. 100% of the profits from donkey basketball go right back into the community. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Scott. It's ironic that they want the mayor to be there to scoop, but it is a city council meeting on April 19, so I don't think anybody's going to be there, regardless of who the mayor is. But thank you very much, Scott. We appreciate it. Okay, moving on, Donnie Beeson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council.
Hello?
Donnie Beeson, 642 Northwestern Place. I just want to take this opportunity, before the date passes, to recognize everybody that came here on Tuesday and the form that they went through. Half of them were sick as a dog, but sat up there, undaunted, answered every question for three hours, and kudos to each one of you to going through that. I came away with three things that I'm very proud to say tonight. One of them is the renewed sense of teamwork from our city council, whether you're going for reelection or somebody new. I got a new sense of that teamwork and a new sense of professionalism, and we all thank you for that very much. Second of all is a renewed sense of leadership from the two gentlemen that are going up for mayor, whether it be election or reelection. That sense of leadership is very much appreciated. And above all, I want to say, Mr. Butter, each and every candidate, multiple times, gave recognition to your staff. If you haven't seen that, it's something to be very, very proud of, and everything that happened on Tuesday, we should all be very proud of. It's a very exciting time, and congratulations to the City of Woodland Park. Thank you.
Thank you, Donnie. Okay, last but not least, Mr. John DeVoe. He's up. Good. Sorry, John.
There you go.
Yeah, there you go. Tell us what you really feel. How am I doing now, Donnie? Okay. A little levity, I guess, is good. Okay, we will move on to reports, and mayor's report. I'm going to take this opportunity to wait, and I'll speak last tonight. Carol?
I have nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Val?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have any real updates, except to repeat what I've said before about our packet. Packets have tremendous information from everybody. Cindy Keating doesn't ever give me anything to report, because her reports are so thorough, as well as the rest of the staff. The staff reports that are in the packet, if you don't read them out there in the community, you really should. They're all very detailed from every department, and I always, the staff is sterling in the reporting on a regular basis to us, and I truly do appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Kenny?
I have nothing.
Paul?
Yes. I'd like to wish everybody a Happy St. Patrick's Day, and I appreciate the participation. I'm a little confused with Mr. Dalton's position. He sits at the press table over there, and yet, he takes the podium. And when he takes the podium, most of the times, he usually ends up with a negative comment about us. What do you got against council? We're up here doing our job, trying to make the city work. No, this is my time.
Okay, I was just asking.
This is my time.
I'll have mine.
I'm sure you will, but...
I'm a resident here in Woodland Park, that's why I can take it.
This is my time. I speak now. You got a whole paper you can talk to there.
I don't have a paper.
Yeah, you got a camera.
It's not a conversation. Thank you.
Please address me.
Excuse me, it's not time for that. Go ahead, Mr. Sonny.
That's exactly what I mean. You don't understand the process over here. This is my time. I don't appreciate you going up there and knocking on us. I don't care if it's council, I don't care if it's city, I don't care if it's the police department. Through your history, you've had problems all around and made comments, okay? So, please.
Thank you.
Please.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Be a citizen, be proactive, and be a plus to this community, okay? We're trying to conduct business up here and do it right, and you can look all you want.
This is business?
This is...
This is...
Mr. Dalton, you don't even deserve a seat up there in the front.
Mr. Sonny?
Period.
I'm going to ask...
It's inappropriate.
I'm going to ask Mr. Dalton in the future to please have a little consideration towards us and this process.
And you've done that.
And I don't appreciate what you do. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Sawyer?
Maybe we should take a five-minute break.
Don't take a break. We're done.
All right, so, I'm going to talk about, I had a good day today. I just want to tell everybody I had a great day today. Congratulations to my son, Cody Sawyer. He is now the 2018 class president for Woodland Park High School. Funny about this, yes? We joked about this a few months ago, and then one day, he says, "Dad, I'm running for class president." And I went, "Okay, good luck." Now that he's class president, I'm sure there will eventually present a conflict of interest somehow. I'll check with the school attorney. How about that? Maybe he should be my campaign manager also. The other fun thing I had to do today is, this guy right over here, Kip Wiley, he doesn't want me to talk about it, but I'm about to. Kip and I had fun today. We had a chance to talk to the senior AP class at the high school. Kip was great, and the students love him. Kip talked about our drinking water and wastewater. I talked about taxes. Not sure they cared about the taxes. This is something that I have been doing for the last four years, educating our future residents on this wonderful city. Thank you, Kip. Thank you, David, for letting me borrow him. I think we are scheduling a field trip here in the next couple of months. All right, so now, let's talk about the DDA. There's a lot going on in the DDA. DDA is doing very well. The lawsuit, the trial has been pushed to a later date. Both parties wanted more time to negotiate. That is all I can say. Newsletter.
The lawsuit, the trial has been pushed to a later date. Both parties wanted more time to negotiate. That is all I can say. Newsletter. If you read the TMJ, you will notice a section that talks about the DDA. It talks a little history of the DDA, it talks a little about the past successes and potential future successes. It also covers one of the board members. I will go ahead and send out the last three newsletters to all the council members to save ink, because the last time I was up here, I printed out so much, my printer actually ran out of ink. Potential TIF agreement. Al's here, he's, him and Ellen are doing a great job with the TIF agreement. The DDA has, okay, wait a minute, let me go back here. We have a potential TIF agreement. The DDA has been approached again by a leadership circle who represents natural grocers for a possible TIF agreement. If everything goes well and we come to an agreement, it might break ground as soon as April. So that'll be nice. All right, TIF agreement application, that's where Al comes in. We had a workshop last Tuesday and ironed out the final details of the new TIF application. I will send that out to council members as soon as I get it. I think you guys will really like it. It's short, I think it's three or four pages long. It's real straight to the point, and I think it's going to really streamline the process. It's good, it's really good. I'm proud to say that this will streamline the TIF application process. I am proud to be on this board. We have really been through some tough times and pulled through as a team. I hope I continue working with the DDA and be their liaison to the council. So recently, in fact, it was, what's today, yesterday in the paper, it talked about mobile hotels. I want to clarify this recent article in the paper mentioning the possible RV parking. This is really for events downtown that are at Memorial Park, or if the U-Pass is putting on an event. This is really just to have temporary parking. The DDA would need to get a temporary use permit. We are not in the business of running an RV park and have no intention to. This would be similar to the Rockin' Gem Show or the rodeo where they have overnight camping. I did get a call from a RV owner, it was an interesting, an RV park owner, it was an interesting conversation. It was, it was, "I just opened the paper, and there it was, and I called you," and I'm not going to tell you the conversation. Finally, I want to say good luck to all the candidates. I have no doubt that everyone running is committed to making this the best small town. I surely am. Thank you.
John?
I have nothing.
Thank you, sir. Okay, we'll move on to city attorney's report.
I have nothing, Your Honor.
And the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. Suzanne's got the election update, and I've got some comments as well.
Thank you, David. The next time we gather, council, the election will be over. It's that soon. I wanted to give you an update that I spoke with the election company today, and all of the ballots have been mailed. So I'm just curious, has anyone received a ballot? Okay. Well, I know, I know someone did because they called me today. I have one person that did, so you should be getting them any day, any minute. I've moved my office downstairs to help with customer service during the election, so if anyone needs me, I'm downstairs, they don't have to go upstairs. And we are starting the judges training next week. On Tuesday, we are having a training on signature verification, and on Friday, we'll be having a training on all of the equipment. And there's two of my judges in the audience I'd like to acknowledge, Mr. Nakarado and Ms. Sinner here. Thank you.
Any other questions for Suzanne about the election process?
Check your mail.
Council, I've got a few things to share with you this evening. I found myself in the last month or so being in kind of the role of fact-checking, so I want to share with you a couple of things. Last meeting, Mr. Coy came to the diocese and stated that property tax mill levy is among the highest in the state of Colorado, and so is our sales tax. And he stated that Woodland Park is one of the highest taxed cities in the state of Colorado. His statement allows you to draw your own conclusion. Does the highest in the state of Colorado mean in the top 10, in the top 10%? What does it mean? So I want to share with you some facts associated with the city of Woodland Park property tax. City of Woodland Park mill levy is 16.249 mills. It's been unchanged since 1991. There are 200 and... Am I on? Okay. I'll try to move this up and see if it's better. There are 270 municipalities in Colorado, and the range of mill levies goes from zero to over 60. The average mean mill levy is 13.833, and the median is 11.591. There are 89 municipalities with a higher mill levy, or 33% of all municipalities. There are 180 municipalities with a lower mill levy, or 67%. Is our property tax among the highest in the state of Colorado? You can decide, you now have the facts. And a comment was made by a council candidate on Tuesday night that businesses pay about four times the residential rate. It's true, and it's because the Gallagher Amendment, which was adopted by the state of Colorado as an amendment to their constitution, declared it to be so. It's true for all municipalities, Woodland Park is not unique. Let's talk about sales tax for a second, because the statement was also made that we could have one of, among the highest, sales taxes in the state of Colorado. The state has a 2.9%, that's true for all municipalities in Colorado. They can't write out of that. County, 1%, true for all, Teller County. The city general fund sales tax is 2%. The city street fund is 1%, and that was done by a vote of the people in 1984 at a rate of 435 in support and 62 against, for 87.5% in favor, to pave our streets and improve drainage. That fund continues to allow us to keep our roadways in top shape, taken care of by a very scientific approach to our roadway barrier. Our total, and then the school district, the school district, again, 1.09% by a vote of the people in 2016, 60% in favor of that. And again, at the bottom, you can see our total is 7.99, total to the city is 3%, total to our general fund is 2%. And it's the general fund that allows us to provide for the services that our community has come to appreciate and expect. So I reiterate that, but the range, here's the range of sales taxes, just the city's sales taxes, 0 to 7%. The average is 2.547, the median is 3%, which is what our total is for the general fund and the street fund. 96 municipalities are higher, 54 are exactly the same, and there are 120 with lower. So 56% of all municipalities in Colorado have the same or higher sales tax as Woodland Park. So here's some comparisons in our local area, because, excuse me, we're compared to the local area frequently. You can see Colorado Springs, a total of 8.25, the city gets 3.12. Fountain, their total is 7.88, the city gets 3.75. Manitou Springs, their total is either 8.03 or 9.03, depending on if you're a special district in their downtown area. The city is either 3.9 or 4.9. Monument, 7.13, the city is 2%. Ripple Creek, 3.9, the city's sales tax is 0. So I ask you again the same question. Is our sales tax among the highest in the state of Colorado? You can decide. But the real story isn't the property tax or the sales tax, it's the full burden that includes fire, ambulance, school, library, county, state, and city. And the ranges of those are astronomical. So here's some other things, too, that were stated. Mr. Coy also stated at the last council meeting, the liberal tax and spend disposition of this council and administration. I believe he's using the term tax and spend too liberally, and intending it to create unnecessary political division in what should be a nonpartisan municipal government election. There's a reason why we're nonpartisan. Yes, we tax. Yes, we spend. Civilized societies have been doing it for thousands of years because they've decided that it's better for a group of people to provide the services, and it's safer than individuals doing it on their own. And so people get to choice, choose whether they live in a municipality or not. It's a choice they get to make. But I can guarantee you that I know where every single penny comes from that supports the city budget. We take care of it, we do it with efficiency, and we provide a great service to this community. But the real point is, with the passing of Tabor in 1992, taxes cannot be raised except by the electorate of a municipality. The city street fund, again, 1984, 88% in favor. The school district, 60% in favor. The citizens voted this. The city council staff did not do it, the city council did not do it, the citizens did. This is not a tax and spend liberal council or administration. And I want to point out, there was no tax increase for the Aquatic Center. 70% of the voters said yes to go into debt for this project. Now let me speak a little bit about the Aquatic Center. At the candidate's forum, Councilman Schaefer said that there were 50% overruns on both projects. This is not true. It's revisionist history. It's false news. Here are the facts. Memorial Park construction, total authorized by the council, you can see the number there, 2.93 million. Total construction project contract, 2.91, not an overrun. The Aquatic Center, total authorized by council, 12.15 million. Total construction contract, 12.1, not a cost overrun. Both under budget, as was the fleet maintenance facility. He also stated that, once again, we didn't have a competent marketing staff. He championed the effort to reduce the special project budget that includes marketing so much that our staff member resigned because she had no marketing budget to work with. Let me remind all of us of some other facts that seem to have gotten lost recently. On the Aquatic Center, the bond was for 10.1 million. The difference was made up with donations from a generous community and from savings that we had accrued over the previous years. Another council candidate on Tuesday night said that when we have an opportunity for savings, it doesn't mean we have to spend it. We did just that. We saved taxpayer dollars for years until we were ready to undertake the Aquatic Center project that has been a dream of this community for decades. And this was reported on in council meetings and in our print media. The other thing that helped was an action that was championed by former council member Carlson. In 2014, he convinced the council to spin down to reduce the fund balance from the upper teens to 10%. That was not a staff recommendation. So this misconception in the community about staff mismanaging the fund balance, well, it started with a council member wanting to drop the fund balance to 10%. And here's some more revisionist history. This issue of having less than a 10% reserve only really occurred in 2017, not the multiple years that others would have you believe. In 2015, an erroneous posting in one of our ledgers happened, the available reserve was 17%. The council should recall that the auditor explained that to the council at the audit report in a public council meeting. In 2016, the audited reserve was 15%. In 2017, our budget revealed a 3.2% reserve. We are projecting it to be a 5.8%. The council was briefed numerous times on why this happened. And in 2018, we budgeted 10%. One year, one year was the fund reserve under 10%. And on other things that are being said, the sidewalk to nowhere, coined not by the city staff, nor even by the applicant. The sidewalk connects two portions of his business that has pedestrian traffic moving back and forth between the two aspects of his business. He included the sidewalk on his plans that he submitted to the city, and he agreed to build. The city has been extremely business-friendly by giving him options and many extra years to finish this. It's been stated that the city staff and this council did nothing with the Vehicle Utilization Review Committee process. It's not true. We eliminated two vehicles as a result of this process and reported that to council at a public meeting. The staff did not have an opportunity to publicly review its conclusions because the council chose not to hear them. And lastly, I can promise you that there are absolutely no gold-plated faucets in any city facilities, as was implied by a member of this council, and I've been in every bathroom that the city has. Of course, the implication is that the city is wasting money on exorbitant facilities. We have functional, practical, working facilities that allow us to provide great services to our citizens. Nor do we have any PhD gardeners working in our flower beds, although with our weather conditions, one might be handy. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you very much. Okay, we're going to move on to comments on written correspondence, and I've got three.
Before we do that, Mayor, may I have the opportunity to address some of Mr. Butterie's comments?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. So you don't have the opportunity to impugn my reputation without hearing from me. And so I will have a different set of numbers here. I won't promise when, but I will justify perhaps not a 50% overrun, but some significant overruns on the basis of the numbers and some of the reconciliations that we're going to be looking at very carefully.
I'd be happy to see those numbers, and as far as impugning reputations, I believe you raked me over the coals last Tuesday night. And so I will be happy to look at your numbers. I'll have our finance director look at them, we'll sit down. Nobody's come to me to look at anything, so I'm happy to do that. If I'm wrong, I'll admit it in a public place, John.
As will I.
Thank you.
Yep. So more to come.
Anything else?
Just a fun thing, just a fun thing, guys, just fun. This is fun.
Make it quick, we have things to do still.
We do?
Yes.
Oh, great, okay. TMJ, I guess I may have to admit I'm a real politician because the TMJ voted me as best local politician. I got a silver medal, Noel Sawyer there, so just kind of fun, thank you. I don't know who voted, who voted for this?
I have no idea.
Apparently, apparently they, I don't know, but I just, I had to laugh about that, I thought it was pretty funny.
Well, we put dollar boxes all around the county, Purple Creek, they're all around the...
Oh yeah, I know exactly where those, I, no, I'm just kidding.
I know where those are.
Okay, we will move on. I have thank you letters for community investment from Teller County Search and Rescue, Welcome Home Warrior, and Eric V. Dixon Memorial. Mrs. Leclerc and Mr. Nakarado, on behalf of Teller County Search and Rescue, we as the Board of Directors want to say thank you. Without the support of our community, we would not be able to serve those who live in vacation in our beautiful community. Thank you very much. And it's signed by a lot of people, but this is from...
Teller...
Teller, okay, thank you. Thank you. I wish I could read the names, I can't. Dear Mrs. Leclerc, I would like to thank the city of Woodland Park for the generous donation of $1,000 from the Community Investment Fund. This donation will be used for our next free family retreat for combat veterans, April 20th through 22nd, 2018. With the help of the city and other local organizations and individuals, we were able to do these retreats. We continue to reach out to these families, offering them help to reduce stress and to cope with the problems of combat exposure and multiple deployments. Yours truly, Donna Fennecall, Director. That's Welcome Home Warrior. Thank you, Donna. And from the American Legion Auxiliary and the Eric V. Dixon Unit. American Legion Auxiliary 1980, a Section 501(c)(19) nonprofit veteran organization, tax identification, would like to thank you for your generous donation of $1,500 for the Eric V. Dixon Memorial Project. Your donation will be used to help fund a new memorial, a life-size bronze statue of Eric which will be placed in a prominent location, as you all know, in Memorial Park, in Woodland Park. Please accept this letter as an acknowledgement of your tax-deductible donation, and thank you again for the members of the American Legion Auxiliary 1980 and the Eric V. Dixon Memorial Project. Sincerely, Denise Denome, Secretary/Treasurer, ALA Unit 1980.
Unfortunately, we can't take the tax deduction.
We can't take the tax deduction. You're right. Okay, kind of reserved my right, if you will, as mayor to make a few comments. I'm not exactly sure where to start, but leadership starts at the top, and that's the person sitting in this chair. And so, you know, I have to take responsibility for some of the things that we've heard about tonight, and we've heard about the last weeks, the last months, and some of the things that are happening in our community... are happening in our community that nobody is proud of. For me, there's been times I've been almost embarrassed to be part of the fray. But again, I have to take responsibility. Here's where I sit. And so I do that. I know we can get better. We're going to have an election. There's a possibility that three or four people on this council right now could possibly change. You may be seeing the same faces with one or two exceptions come April 3rd or April 5th, excuse me. And so I've got a couple of comments in that regard. I was fortunate to be able to attend a piece of the Caris Bible College, some of you that were at the candidate's forum Tuesday, heard me speak to this at Caris Bible College and get to hear Tony Dungy, who is a Super Bowl winner on the playing side and the coaching side, most recently in 2007 with Indianapolis. And long speech and it was great. But at the end, his words of wisdom, if you will, or what he was trying to bring to all of us was simple. What's next? Think about it. What's next for us? We all have to do better. And for me, Mr. Sanye, I appreciate Mr. Dalton for this reason. I think he's come with a newer approach and a better approach and a more positive approach because I've seen through the last couple of years how he's progressed, in my opinion. And I think we all need to do that. Clearly, whether we're up here or whether we're sitting in the audience, whether we're at work, whether we're with our families, we all need to do better. What Mr. Dungy was talking about with what's next and his team, this is what he told his team in 2007, in the aftermath of winning the Super Bowl. And his point is, right, I mean, this is great. We won the Super Bowl, but we're not done. How are we going to move forward? How are we going to continue to get better, working together? And let's not go out tonight and blow everything we did by doing something stupid tonight or next week or the week after and keep focused on what our end goal is. I thought it was great. I thought it was a great message. And as I talk to my kids in baseball, I talk to my kids at home, I talk to people, and you all agree, you can apply that to almost anything we do. What's next? Think about it. For our council, I want this, whether I sit here or not, and everybody's going to agree. We need to get better. We need to find a way to work together, not just here, but our entire community. Because there's nobody that will disagree with this. Woodland Park is a great, great place to live. We have issues. Everybody's got issues. How can you, how can you help us get better? And that's what I would like your focus to be on in the coming term, the coming years, the coming weeks, regardless of who sits here. I know these people on my left are fully vested in our community and working hard, and everyone at the candidate's forum reflected that. So I don't have to worry about this. But how we provide the leadership for our community will determine where we go, how far we go, and how great we are. Somehow, something crossed my email just yesterday. And it talks to a lot of things that I think we all need to think about in our lives, not just here, but at home, in your business, in your life. And I think it's pretty inspirational. I think it's motivational. I don't have the same words. I wish I did. So I'm going to ask you to spend 10 minutes and listen to this video. And I listened to it and watched it eight times today and wasn't able to get through it one of those times without tears in my eyes. But it's got a great message. And I won't say anything after it's over because I think it kind of sums it up. And I'd like you all to listen carefully and take something from this when you leave here today. That said, I want to congratulate everybody on this council for the work that they've done and wish everybody the best of luck, whether you're on this committee or this council or not, as we move forward. I know the city appreciates everything that you all have done, so thank you very much. That said, here we go. Um, yes.
I agree with you 100%. And I'm not trying to cause any calamity. I just, it hurts me when I see a knock come my way and I have a certain forward movement. That's all.
Give this.
Appreciate Mr. Dalton, and I've never spoke out. But God, Dalton, say what you got to say and get off the clock.
This is not about you or me or Mr. Dalton or anybody else. This is about us. This is about Woodland Park. And please pay close attention.
Wisest person I ever met in my life, a third grade dropout. Wisest and dropout in the same sentence is rather oxymoronic, like jumbo shrimp. Like Fun Run. Ain't nothing fun about it. Like Microsoft Works. Y'all don't hear me. I used to say like country music, but I've lived in Texas so long, I love country music now. I, yeah. I hunt, I fish, I have cowboy boots and cowboy, y'all, I'm a black neck, red neck. Do you hear what I'm saying? No longer oxymoronic for me to say country music. And it's not oxymoronic for me to say third grade and dropout. That third grade dropout, the wisest person I ever met in my life, who taught me to combine knowledge and wisdom to make an impact, was my father. A simple cook, wisest man I ever met in my life, just a simple cook, left school in the third grade to help out on the family farm, but just because he left school doesn't mean his education stopped. Mark Twain once said, "I've never allowed my schooling to get in the way of my education." My father taught himself how to read, taught himself how to write, decided in the midst of Jim Crowism, as America was breathing the last gasp of the Civil War, my father decided he was going to stand and be a man, not a black man, not a brown man, not a white man, but a man. He literally challenged himself to be the best that he could all the days of his life. I have four degrees. My brother is a judge. We're not the smartest ones in our family. It's a third grade dropout daddy. A third grade dropout daddy who was quoting Michelangelo, saying to us, "Boys, I won't have a problem if you aim high and miss, but I'm going to have a real issue if you aim low and hit." A country mother quoting Henry Ford, saying, "If you think you can or if you think you can't." You're right. I learned that from a third grade dropout. Simple lessons, lessons like these. Son, you'd rather be an hour early than a minute late. We never knew what time it was at my house because the clocks were always ahead. My mother said for nearly 30 years, my father left the house at 3:45 in the morning. One day she asked him, "Why daddy?" He said, "Maybe one of my boys will catch me in the act of excellence." I want to share two things with you. Aristotle said, "You are what you repeatedly do. Therefore excellence ought to be a habit, not an act." Don't ever forget that. I know you're tough, but always remember to be kind. Always. Don't ever forget that. Never embarrass mama. Mm-hmm. Yeah. But mama ain't happy, ain't nobody happy. If daddy ain't happy, don't nobody care, but you know, I tell you. Next lesson, lesson from a cook over there in the galley. Son, make sure your servant's towel is bigger than your ego. Ego is the anesthesia that deadens the pain of stupidity. Y'all might have a relative in mind you want to send that to. Let me say it again. Ego is the anesthesia that deadens the pain of stupidity. Pride is the burden of a foolish person. John Wooden coached basketball at UCLA for a living, but his calling was to impact people. And with all those national championships, guess what he was found doing in the middle of the week? Going into the cupboard, grabbing a bloom, and sweeping his own gym floor. You want to make an impact, find your bloom. Every day of your life, you find your bloom. You grow your influence stepway. That way, you're attracting people so that you can impact them. Final lesson, son, if you're going to do a job, do it right. I've always been told how average I can be. Always been criticized about being average, but I want to tell you something. I stand here before you, before all of these people, not listening to those words, but telling myself every single day to shoot for the stars, to be the best that I can be. Good enough isn't good enough if it can be better. And better isn't good enough if it can be best. Let me close with a very personal story that I think will bring all this into focus. Wisdom will come to you in the unlikely list of sources, a lot of times through failure. When you hit rock bottom, remember this, while you're struggling, rock bottom can also be a great foundation on which to build and on which to grow. I'm not worried that you'll be successful. I'm worried that you won't fail from time to time. A person that gets up off the canvas and keeps growing, that's the person that will continue to grow their influence. Back in the 70s, to help me make this point, let me introduce you to someone. I met the finest woman I'd ever met in my life. Mm-hmm. Back in my day, we'd have called her a brick house. This woman was the finest woman I'd ever seen in my life. There's just one little problem. Back then, ladies didn't like big old linemen. The blind side hadn't come out yet. They liked quarterbacks and running backs. We're at this dance and I find out her name is Trina Williams from Lompoc, California. And we were all dancing and we're just excited. And I decided in the middle of dancing with her that I would ask her for a phone number. She, Trina, was the first one, Trina was the only woman in college who gave me her real telephone number. The next day, we walked to Basket and Robin's Ice Cream Parlor. My friends couldn't believe it. This has been 40 years ago and my friends still can't believe it. We go on a second date and a third date and a fourth date. Mm-hmm. We drive from Chico to Vallejo so that she could meet my parents. My father meets her, my daddy, my hero, he meets her, pulls me to the side and says, "Is she psycho?" But anyway, we go together for a year, two years, three years, four years. By now, Trina's a senior in college. I'm still a freshman, but I'm working some things out. I'm so glad I graduated in four terms, Nixon, Ford, Carter, Reagan. So now it's time to propose. So I talked to her girlfriends and it's California, it's in the 70s, so it has to be outside, have to have a candle and have to have, you know, some chocolate. And listen, I'm from the hood. I had a bottle of Boone's Farm wine. That's what I had. She said yes. That was the key. I married the most beautiful woman I'd ever seen in my, y'all ever been to a wedding and even before the wedding starts, you hear this? How in the world? And it was coming from my side of the family. We get married, we have a few children, our lives are great. One day, Trina finds a lump in her left breast, breast cancer. Six years after that diagnosis, me and my two little boys walked up to mommy's casket. And for two years, my heart didn't beat. If it wasn't for my faith in God, I wouldn't be standing here today. If it wasn't for those two little boys, there would have been no reason for which to go on. I was completely lost. That was rock bottom. You know what sustained me? The wisdom of a third grade dropout. The wisdom of a simple cook. We're at the casket. I'd never seen my dad cry, but this time I saw my dad cry. That was his daughter. Trina was his daughter, not his daughter-in-law. And I'm right behind my father about to see her for the last time on this earth. And my father shared three words with me that changed my life right there at the casket. It would be the last lesson he would ever teach me. He said, "Son, just stand. You keep standing. You keep standing, no matter how rough the sea, you keep standing." And I'm not talking about just water. You keep standing, no matter what, you don't give up. And as clearly as I'm talking to you today, these were some of her last words to me. She looked me in the eye and she said, "It doesn't matter to me any longer how long I live. What matters to me most is how I live." Ask y'all one question, a question that I was asked all my life by a third grade dropout. How you living? How you living? Every day, ask yourself that question, how you living? Here's, here's what a cook would suggest you to live this way, that you would not judge, that you would show up early, that you'd be kind, that you'd make sure that that servant's towel is huge and used, that if you're going to do something, you do it the right way. That, that, that cook would tell you this, that it's never wrong to do the right thing, that how you do anything is how you do everything. And in that way, you will grow your influence to make an impact. In that way, you will honor all those who have gone before you, who have invested in you. Look in those unlikely places for wisdom. Enhance your life every day by seeking that wisdom and asking yourself every night, how am I living? May God richly bless y'all. Thank you.
Meeting's adjourned.